Dad line's calling September the seventh, twenty twenty one for the city council for the city of Lake City to order. Everyone will stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the application.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
I pray our heavenly Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight, conduct the business of our city. We thank you for your many blessings. We ask that you guide us in our deliberations, that what we do is for the betterment of our community. We ask that you keep in mind and help the family of Randy Burnham, our fire chief who passed, and a person that really had the community at heart, did a tremendous job as fire chief, and he would sorely be missed. And her name, pray amen. Thank you, Samson.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say about something about Randy real quick. So I'd like it for us to remember Chief Burnham. He was truly an outstanding man, a leader among men, but he was yet a humble man. If you knew him, if you knew he was a humble man, a man you could trust and be confident in what he told you was true. He's an irreplaceable member of the Lake City Fire Department and the city of Lake City. Please remember our fire department in your prayers and Chief Burnham's family as they struggle with this great loss. There's nothing we can do to bring the chief back and nothing we can do to fill this his great loss in our lives. But with that being said, I want to propose that the city of Lake City place Chief Randy Burnham's name on the new West Side Fire Department that's being built. It's an honor that Chief Burnham deserves, even though it isn't enough for the impact he's had. It's something I'd recommend. I know it has to come up at a future meeting, but I think we should do that. And that's all I have to say.
Well, yeah, I I got some. Uh, like, you know, still with, uh, Samson, he burned, um, I kind of prolong it. Just give him wood on my side.
Thank you. Miss Icy, call her off, please.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Hill. Mr. Jefferson.
Here.
Mr. Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Witt.
Here.
Mr. Coverline.
Here.
Ms. Fields.
Here.
Chief Gomor.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened its public meeting since nineteen sixty-eight. The city code has prohibited any person from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience perpetues boisterous conduct. Such conduct will not be tolerated. There's only one approved manner of addressing the council, that is to be recognized and then speak from the podium. I'm gonna ask everybody here tonight, that anybody that speaks, they speak from the podium, they speak for three minutes, and they be respectful of everybody else. There's no reason why we can't be respectful of each other. We can discuss the issues, but we need to keep it civil. Now, as far as the audience, there's a lot of people here, and as I said, boisterous conduct, commenting on somebody's comments, we can't have it. There's too many people in this room. I'm asking the police department, if somebody's boisterous and not speaking from the podium, to please just ask them to leave at that time. Because I'm gonna give you, everybody knows that's the rules. So if y'all would do that, and we could all be respectful, we'll get through this meeting. We have approval of the agenda, and, uh, items ten and eleven have been removed. That's the ones that's twenty twenty-one, twenty-two hundred, and twenty twenty-one, twenty-two oh two. So with that amendment to the agenda, this ceremony.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the removal of item eighteen.
Is there a second? So, okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? Miss Icy, call her off. Yeah. Is there a reason for removing eighteen?
Yes, there's no supporting documentation, and, you know, we got this agenda at five o'clock Friday, and the blind side that was put into it should have been announced on Tuesday, a week before the meeting, and there should be supporting documentation.
Okay, Miss Icy, call her off.
Mr. Sampson.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson.
No.
Mr. Green.
No.
Mayor Witt.
No.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda with item ten and eleven?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the agenda of removing items ten and eleven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Uh, we just got wrong.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
No.
Mr. Sampson.
No.
Mayor Witt.
Yes. Okay, next is approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we have a presentation from Ms. Jamie Bear from Jones Edmonds.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I hope you're all doing well tonight. I have two presentations for you that I think we're gonna bring up on the screen over here.
Which ones first?
The first one will be the Bell Road wastewater capacity analysis. They're presentations that I previously gave at the Joint Utility Advisory Committee, and I was asked to present to the full council, so I'm going to do that here today. And I was also asked to present it to the full county commission, so I'll be doing that as well. So I apologize if you see me three times, but the more, the merrier, right? Okay, so this is a presentation on the Bell Road wastewater capacity analysis. It's a study that we conducted for the city, for the Bell Road corridor, basically, uh, the Bell Road corridor of the wastewater system. So that's from the huddle house up near Bell Road where the new development is going on through Warner, all the way down to the St. Margaret's plant. The goal of the project, if you go to the next slide, was to review your existing collection system's capacity, to collect field data, to, sorry, the map's a little bit hard to see, but that is your wastewater system on the right. We use the data that we collected to develop a hydraulic model so that we could take a look at future projected wastewater flows over the next twenty years and see how that would impact your collection system from Bell Road down. This is in support of the economic development initiatives that are going on up at Bell Road so that we can ensure that the city system is ready to meet that new capacity that'll be coming out in the pipe, so to speak. We modeled three different scenarios, a short, medium, and long term, and they were based on known wastewater flows that were becoming from developments that expressed an interest in the area, starting with a hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day, a hundred and thirty thousand gallons per day extra, all the way up to five hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day plus fire, plus future growth that we anticipated in the city proper as well. And then we took those model results to develop projected products, proposed projects and improvements, as well as cost estimates, so that we could move forward and get us ready for the development. Next slide, please. So six projects came out of the Bell Road wastewater capacity analysis study. The first one is improvements to lift station number five, to simply upgrade the pumps to prevent high water level alarms and to prevent lag pump-on conditions, basically to keep it running at its most efficient state and not have to worry about any potential overflows in the future. So that's a pretty straightforward project at the north end of our study area. And I'm happy to answer any questions along the way if you want, but I think I'll just kind of go through all six and summarize them at the end, then answer questions at that time. That's okay with everyone? Next slide, please. The second project we identified, you can kind of see the whole scope of the study here from the north end, up where the huddle house is, down to the St. Margaret's plant. This recommendation is to put in a little over twelve thousand linear feet of new force main. That would be replacing a stretch of a little over seven thousand linear feet of existing six-inch force main, making it a little bit larger to accommodate the new projected flows, as well as to put in a new line to bypass one of your existing lift stations. Again, this helps protect the capacity of that existing lift station and gravity collection system, while sending the flow directly into the larger section of your system before it goes to the plant. This will parallel the existing one to help keep everything in the same right-of-way where all your utility corridors currently are. And this is another project that is mostly outside of city limits on the north part of town. Next slide, please. The third project, we're calling the Washington Street Force Main upgrades, and this is basically bypassing an existing section of vitrified clay pipe. Basically, you have a pretty significantly large clay pipe in this area on the north end of town, in the kind of industrial area over there. And the idea is that's a singular point of failure in a brittle type of pipe, and so if we can bypass that with another pipe, we can maintain the capacity that currently exists while increasing it in the new pipe and sending it straight again down into the larger part of your system that can accommodate those flows. Again, we're paralleling that to minimize our construction costs and to keep all your utilities in a close proximity. Next slide, please. The next projected project would be a Young's Park lift station. We are proposing a brand-new lift station in the Young's Park area. It is city-owned property, so it theoretically would not require any expensive easements or anything like that. We could construct in the right-of-way, and this would again protect the vulnerable clay pipes that are in this area of your gravity collection system and reduce the possibility of pipe breaks or system overflows. This new lift station would then be able to periodically divert flow into the older parts of the system to keep it kind of flushed through and keep everything moving forward, but otherwise, again, would bypass that sensitive part and send it into a new pipeline that I'll show on the next slide. If you'll go to the next slide, please. The Young's Park Lift Station Force Main, you can see the start up there at Young's Park, all the way down to the St. Margaret's plant. The goal of this is to circumvent another large clay pipe, this one next to the lake that you can see in the middle of your screen. That's an eighteen-inch vitrified clay pipe that goes through a lot of backyards, is an environmentally sensitive area right next to the lake. And again, it's a singular point of failure where the majority of your wastewater flow currently goes. And so to protect that environmentally sensitive area and those homes while reducing the cost of construction by not replacing that pipe, we'd instead put a new parallel pipe coming down McFarland, which would circumvent that sensitive area and allow us to send the flow directly to St. Margaret's. This would increase the available capacity in your system to meet all of the new flows of that projected development up in the area of Bell Road. And it would also include valving that would allow your city operators to optimize flow between your two wastewater plants, which I think is something that city staff has been looking for for quite a while, so that we can take advantage of your new Kicklighter plant that has a lot more capacity currently than the older St. Margaret's plant does. If you'll go to the next slide, please. The final project is the Kicklighter optimization project. So not only the valving that's associated with the previous project, but this would be a new pipeline that would come around and connect with the part of your system that goes to Kicklighter, and it would give city staff the flexibility to send flows to whichever plant has the most capacity available at that time, which, as the city continues to grow and develop, it'll help them to, you know, better mitigate which flows go where and to maintain that capacity that you need to support that development. Next slide, please, is just the summary of all the projects. I apologize for the small font, trying to fit a lot of stuff onto one slide here, but basically, we gave this presentation at the Joint Utility Advisory Committee, and the recommendations we received from the committee at that time were that the county agreed to pursue the first two projects we identified. Those are north of town. The county, Mr. Kraus is here tonight, if you'd like to speak to him as well, but the county commission has already obligated funds to go towards those two projects. So they are all in and supporting the city's utility with the new development that's coming in north of town. And then the advisory committee suggested that the city pursue projects three through six, and they asked Jones Edmonds to prepare a scope and fee to cover the professional services related to that project, as design, permitting, survey, geotechnical investigation, and environmental investigation. And so that is in your packet as well. I'm not sure if we want to go to that next or kind of continue with the presentation route, but we have prepared that for you today. It is a little bit less the cost than what was presented in our planning-level study, so that's the cost savings that we found for you. And we've set it up in a way that I think will promote efficiency throughout the project, where we have kind of a tentative low-level design before sending the surveyor out, so we can maximize the surveyor's efficiency, which we talked about. Surveyors are pretty backed up, so we want them to survey as little as possible to still make the project work, and so we're gonna help kind of narrow that down before we do the project. I also brought my engineer with me today, who will be the engineer director on that project, Scooter Sheldon's in the back, so if you have any technical questions, he can answer those as well. But that is the Bell Road wastewater capacity analysis and the associated scope and fee that's before you today.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I know as part of the discussion, the utility committee, we talked about ways to fund this project, and there's multiple different ways. Staff is gonna be pursuing a grant opportunity, but in addition, there are ARPA funds coming, and I would recommend that this is an important thing that we would want to use those funds for when we get them. The county, like she mentioned, has already approved at their meeting last Thursday, numbers one and two of the six projects, so we're working together on this, I believe. Are you doing the engineering on that one as well?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
Not, not yet, but.
Not yet. Hey, you better pitch it. So I don't know if Mr. Dahl would want to make a comment about the funding sources yet, or are we premature on that?
We haven't applied for any, we haven't applied for any funding as yet as far as the grants and stuff. We were waiting, we, like I said, we were able to get with the county and see what their direction would be, and to make sure that the council was on board, but went forward with this. And if we are, we'll go ahead and file the grants, the other funding, like you said, ARPA fund, something like that, to have us to back up just in case. But we're very confident, Jamie and I, about getting the grants for this project because it is helping the system and for future development and taking other systems on the line.
Mayor, I have a question. Okay, uh, is there anything else you had?
Well, so that was the first presentation, and then I believe it's up to council if you want to discuss the project's scope and fee for that project first, or if you'd like me to do the next presentation and then discuss both scope and fees together.
I agree with that.
Mr. Mayor, the grants that Mr. Dahl was speaking of, does that cover the scope and fees? Is, is that part of that?
Mr. Mayor, as of right now, we have not applied for any grants for these projects. They could certainly go towards the professional services, but I believe the intent originally was for some sort of ARPA or COVID funding to go towards the professional services portion, and then once that's complete, we can submit a shovel-ready project for grant funding, which is much more competitive.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
And so could you elaborate on why we broke into six different projects? Maybe explain that as well, for the funding purposes?
Certainly. There are a couple of different reasons why it makes sense to split these projects up. Two of them are, one is for sure, fully outside of city limits. The second is the majority of it is outside of city limits, and so it, with the county being willing to coordinate with the city on these projects, it makes sense for them to be the primary grantee for those two projects and for them to pursue that. Projects one and two tie together, and projects three through six tie together. So they, they really are two projects, but we wanted the city to have the option to bite off small pieces at a time pending your budget situation. And so it does make sense they're all connected to split them up in those two ways, and then it also is more expedient to split them up that way because you can use your continuing engineering services contracts to hire firms to do the design and permitting of these projects without having to go out on the street and do a multi-month RFQ process. It allows us to hit the ground running a lot faster, to get these projects in the ground sooner, which will therefore allow the economic development to happen sooner, bringing more money into the town.
Right, we would like economic development.
Yes, sir.
These families would. So, Mr. Mayor, do we need to put a motion to try and move forward on this?
Uh, we can, it's covered on, we can do a motion that the consensus is to move forward, but it's not a.
So they can start looking for grants.
If you want to finalize the procurement of Jones Edmonds according to the scope of work, you're gonna need to go have that be reviewed by procurement and then brought back to you in the form of.
That's right.
And supplemental agreement or task assignment. I am, I won't comment on what the engineer needs in order to move forward with looking for grants, but as far as procuring the engineer, I've stated that process.
So would we need like a consensus to advise staff to continue working for this project? That might be the question.
I think that's. I know, I know I wouldn't be willing to authorize staff to apply for the grants. I think it's an easy thing in the procurement process, the attorney disposed to, so. For grants, absolutely, I'm okay with, we need to apply for the grants, there's no reason not to.
Okay. I agree, we need to apply for this, we need to continue to move forward.
I agree also. Yes, that's a consensus. Okay.
Okay, we'll go into the next presentation then. Um, this is the city of Lake City Water Main Routing Study. You can go ahead to the next slide, please.
Do you want to click here?
Oh, sure, I could click myself, that's fine.
If you know when to change, I know.
It's annoying saying next slide, please, but that's okay.
Mayor, if you don't want it, I'll take it back.
So this was the water main routing study that we conducted for the city to look at alternatives to bring water from the Price Creek Water Treatment Plant to the North Florida Mega Industrial Park. The goal was to be able to provide up to four million gallons per day on average to industrial park customers. We looked at six different route alternatives for a twenty-four-inch water transmission main. We prepared a hydraulic model to evaluate the effect that that water main would have on the rest of your system, and we developed cost estimates for the recommended route alternatives. The criteria for evaluating routes from the Price Creek Water Treatment Plant to the North Florida Mega Industrial Park was contingent on a lot of these factors here, but the number-one stated goal by city council and by city staff was to get water to the north end of the industrial park first. That's because the residential area in the northwestern portion of the park is expected to develop faster than the businesses. There's already some zoning discussions going on, et cetera, and so the idea is that we can get water up there where the first development's going to happen, that will help accelerate the rest of development, and then we can continue to extend pipeline from there. But we also did take into account the various wetlands that are known to be on-site, existing infrastructure, and access, the proposed layout of the industrial park that came from the landowner, as well as soil type, topography, construction constraints, et cetera. I'm gonna kind of quickly go through the six alternatives that we evaluated and try not to get too bogged down in technical detail, but we wanted to just be able to show you that we did kind of look at entering the park from multiple different locations, different lengths of route, and different construction techniques. The first one, alternative one, it's a little bit hard to see, but it's in red there. It would go from the Price Creek Water Treatment Plant up along Timber Wolf, hugging where the airport is, to US ninety, and then connecting to the Loop Road for the industrial park that is, has currently been constructed, at least in rough form, by Warehouser. The benefit is it connects directly to the plant, and you have limited utility conflicts there, but there's busy infrastructure corridor along Timber Wolf and US ninety. This is a relatively long route, fifteen and a half thousand linear feet, but this does meet the stated goal of bringing the pipeline to the north end of the park, and it does allow for convenient looping of the water system because there is existing water main in that right-of-way there. And we also do stay exclusively in the right-of-way, so no easements will need to be acquired, but it may require a more complicated construction technique, horizontal directional drilling to go under some existing wetlands that are adjacent to the roadway. Alternative two comes out the south end of the plant, connecting to an existing thirty-inch water main, and then it cuts up along a timber road to parallel the well fields of the city and connect into the industrial park kind of in the middle. The, it's a little bit of a shorter route, it's less than ten thousand linear feet, so it's less than two miles, and we can open cut the entire way, which is a less expensive construction technique. You don't really have to drill, there aren't any wetlands we're avoiding because we're all staying along the existing timber roads. But the downside is it does connect in the middle of the park, and again, we anticipate construction to come in the north end first, so this would require another phase to do additional connectivity for those new residential developments that are coming in. Alternative three is the purple one you can see down at the bottom. This, again, connects off of the thirty-inch pipeline that comes from the Price Creek Water Treatment Plant going south, and it does stay predominantly on timber roads as well, but some of them are on Water Management District property, so it would require us to get an easement from the Water Management District for at least a portion of the construction. While it passes near wetlands, it doesn't go through any of them. However, it does have the most accented topography, so again, construction is a little bit more challenging this way, and it is a medium-length route at eleven thousand seven hundred linear feet. Option four kind of cuts straight through the middle. Again, this parallels the well field coming off of the high-service pump station at the plant. You deal with some utility conflicts at the plant itself and the fact that you're paralleling the well field, but it's a relatively short route at less than ten thousand feet. Again, the downside is we come in the middle of the industrial park, and that is a little bit far away from where we expect the development to occur first. However, it's a very straightforward route through mostly city property with only minor easements necessary and doing mostly open-cut construction, which is again, a little bit less expensive than having to drill. Alternative five A slash B you'll see is one of our recommended alternatives. This comes off of the high-service pump station at the plant, goes along a portion of Timber Wolf before cutting through a Water Management District timber road to get to the industrial park boundary. This is split into two options because we can get water to the park where it needs to go in that solid line. You see the ends of the park boundary, we can do that relatively quickly. And then the second portion is within the industrial park itself, and is proposed to follow the layout of the roads that the industrial park landowner, Warehouser, has proposed, but they're not built yet. And so we suggested going with five A, which stays mostly in right-of-way except with a little bit of district property, mostly avoids wetlands, is the shortest length at only fifty-eight hundred linear feet, and then coordinating with Warehouser for a future phase so that when they're constructing their new roads and their new layout, we can do our pipeline at the same time, which, again, would help save construction, help save time, and make sure the pipe is exactly where it needs to be when it needs to be. The last alternative we reviewed is alternative six. This is another one down the bottom, following along the existing timber road, minimizing wetland impacts, but connecting to the south end of the park. This is the second shortest alternative, eighty-eight hundred linear feet, and there's only one phase. It's not broken into two phases, but again, the downside is it's connecting to the south end of the park, and that's sort of the area we expect to develop last. However, if you're looking for a relatively short route that has a relatively cheap construction cost, that is certainly one way to do it. We developed a matrix to compare based on all of the criteria listed at the beginning, and we identified two potential alternatives. That would be our, our best options for connectivity in the area where we needed first, alternative one, which is the one that goes all the way up Timber Wolf and along US ninety in that very congested corridor, and option five A slash B, which is the one that I just discussed, that we broke up, again, for expediency and for convenience and coordinating with the existing landowner. We developed cost estimates for both of these alternatives, including breaking five A and five B up into two projects. Those are presented at the bottom here. And at the Joint Utility Advisory Committee meeting, we were instructed to prepare a scope and fee for the five A, B option. However, in further discussions with city staff, we agreed that it made the most sense to pursue five A now, and then again, proceed with five B in the future when the development at the park is more well-known and well-planned out, so we can coordinate with them and not have to move a pipeline or put something in the wrong spot. That is a summary of the Water Main Routing Study. I have that scope and fee before you as well, but I think we'll have the same result that we had with the other presentation. However, I noticed that Florida Gateway College did put something on the table by the door expressing their concerns about that project. I know that's item sixteen on your agenda, but I would be happy to address that now while I'm up here, if you'd like. However, I can stick around for item sixteen, too, whichever makes the most sense.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I believe that letter is an addition to item sixteen, so this is actually in response to this particular item. Is that correct, Audrey? It's talking directly about this item. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that you go ahead and discuss those items from that letter.
Sure. Go ahead.
Before we leave that, could I have a question, verification from Jamie? Out of five, I mean, rule five A, what impact, if any, does that have on a business at the LQK? Does that rule go around behind the building?
The library at FDC?
No, he's talking about how they gave you the.
Oh, the car lot that's there? This would not impact the car lot. We, we actually had a preliminary discussion with the Water Management District. We had originally proposed a route that was a little bit further north and was closer to LQK, but the district preferred that we take their southern timber road that existed, and that made more sense because it was a little bit more developed anyway, so it would be easier to construct for us. And so we do not anticipate having any impact on LQK, LQ, excuse me, at all.
Okay. Did you want to address that?
I could address this letter if that's what y'all would like. Florida Gateway wanted to say something.
You could wait until the meeting there, possibly. I mean, you could wait till item sixteen.
But, I mean, just as a, as a short comment on it, I do not believe that the construction of a water main under the existing timber road or on the east side, it's not on the, start that sentence again. Constructing a water main under Timber Wolf and/or immediately east of Timber Wolf in the right-of-way, we would not anticipate any impact on the college whatsoever other than maybe temporary maintenance of traffic for the folks who are going in and out. Putting a new water main under the ground does not affect the stormwater flow in the area, and during construction, any, um, stormwater issues would be taken care of by the contractor to avoid any adverse off-site impacts. It's part of the permitting process that we have to take care of. So, um, I appreciate the concerns of FGC, and we are aware of the existing wetlands. We are aware of the flooding issues they seem to be having over there. Um, however, we do not feel that our project has any impact on those existing issues. And if we do send a environmental scientist out and there is a wetland that would be impacted, we would either utilize construction techniques that would minimize or mitigate any impacts of that wetland by perhaps drilling under it, or if there are impacts, we would follow appropriate mitigation procedures to take care of that wetland mitigation permitting, getting any credits we would need to get. Um, but our goal would be to not impact the wetland at all. Um, and if there's any more, you know, technical questions beyond that, Scooter would be happy to answer those for you as well. But, I mean, my, my basic comment is that we would not impact the college. And we did, uh, we worked with Mr. Dial to add a, um, public meeting portion to that scope, which is not a standard thing, that we put in like a water main project so that we could address the concerns of the public relating to not only the flooding at FGC, but also the potential extension of the airport runway, which I know are concerns some folks have expressed in the past of projects in this area. So, we plan to, at the early stages of the design, engage with the public and the council to ensure those concerns are addressed and that we do not have any negative impacts on those ongoing projects. But I'm happy to stick around if y'all have additional questions when, uh, item sixteen comes up. Otherwise, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Ron Williams, I think, wants to speak at this time.
Well, there are all the presentations given, President Bell, the Bell Road Corridor. Bell Road Corridor, Dream Line, oh, years ago, it got beat down, it got beat down, it beat down. Finally, we got new commissioners on board, and they saw my vision, started developing, uh, what was just a dirt road. The city and the county and one truck paid a significant part in the first phase of where we are now. We lost more than three different times. Man went back to town, ran together, they must contribute to know automatic to that problem or guilt to go. But what makes Bell Road and the Bell Road Corridor so unique? I'll have my, I think my fourth meeting will be landowners in the Bell Road Corridor. We want to extend the duty, I mean, if we want to extend the area of commercial and industrial areas on that corridor. Although we say the Bell Road Corridor, we are not speaking just about road. Uh, we have identified ten or so property owners in that section of, uh, the Bell Road, about, about twenty-three hundred acres, uh, that can be, uh, developed for housing, commercial, and industrial. But for us to get to do the change, uh, create that duty, we must show that we can provide the essential, which is utility in order to, uh, get that passed to, uh, the public here in that, and confirm that that has. So it's very important that we continue to look at what can be done in that corridor, or that corridor with all well, I can, uh, five miles, that's almost to there. Go, go right, uh, more roads from north going to south, uh, twenty-five feet. We have a property owner now, uh, process, signing a, uh, reman for personal property, property illumination. Uh, so that corridor is going to grow. But that corridor growth benefits the city as well, it is the, uh, the county. The city, uh, benefits the city simply because we get money, now finished this. They give you that money from your, uh, from your, uh, utilities, the county get money from property. Yeah, building, recreate that, that corridor, work together, need the county committee, uh, potential there for, maybe. We are, we are in with that project. Thank you, David, you want to add to that?
Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if nothing more, on item four, we'll move into fire assessment budget hearings. We're opening a public hearing on the proposed fire protection assessment rates. Is there any public comments relating to the fire protection assessment rates?
Anybody want to speak to the fire assessment rate?
If not, we will close the public hearing, moving to City Council's ordinance number twenty-two-one dash one-two-nine. Sheriff, now would you read that by title?
A resolution of City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, constituting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two annual fire assessment resolution relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the City of Lake City, Florida, re-imposing fire protection assessments against assessed property located within the City of Lake City for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-one. Approving the rates of assessment, approving the final assessment role, confirming and supplementing the two thousand twenty-one preliminary rate resolution, providing for severability, and providing an effective date period.
Is there a motion out of City Council Resolution number twenty-two-one dash one-two-nine?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of City Council Resolution twenty-two-one dash one-two-nine.
Seven. Been a motion out of circuit, any discussion? Mr. Hockley, cause roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept input from all interested parties relative to, to, to the discussion, consideration, and tentative approval of the city's twenty-two-one dash twenty-two proposed millage rate and operating budget. We offer the opportunity to all in attendance to speak in regard to the budget. Ask that all speakers identify themselves by name and address. At this time, the finance director will provide a summary of the budget process and address those items essential to compliance with the state of Florida truth and millage TRIM requirement.
The City Council proposes a tentative millage rate of four point nine zero 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 mils and a tentative capital and operating budget of sixty million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty-two-one dash twenty-two. Council action tonight constitutes the tentative budget hearing as required by state TRIM criteria and was announced to the general public by TRIM notices mailed by the Columbia County Property Appraiser on August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. During this hearing, the following agenda will be addressed. Council will discuss the twenty-two-one dash twenty-two millage and operating budget and allow citizen input as appropriate. The council will direct announcement of the tentative millage rate proposed for adoption and of any increase, decrease, and no change, or no change. The city attorney will read by title, Millage Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash one-thirty. The council will adopt Millage Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash one-thirty on first reading. The city attorney will read by title, Budget Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash one-thirty-one. The council will adopt Budget Resolution Number twenty-two-one dash one-thirty-one on first reading.
At this time, I declare the tentative budget hearing open for discussion for public input filed by discussion about the city council. Anybody in the audience wish to speak to the budget?
Mr. McGinn, I'm out, and I also will speak when you get to the public, coming spark of the question. Purpose of budget, let me, uh, say this, that during the budget workshop, that, uh, you did, and this council did a public, uh, disservice by not allowing the public to have some input prior to the discussion during the budget workshop. I attended the county commission budget workshop, and I attended hours in the past, but public comment wasn't allowed, not during the discussion of the budget workshop, prior to the discussion. By not allowing the public to have input, you basically suppressed the public opportunity to have some input on the budget. Yes, it's true, we have an opportunity tonight, but I also know for having several city council, I'm attending the city council meeting all over Florida. Very seldom an interchange takes place at this point in the budget process. So I just want to say to you that that one, you, you did not show leadership by doing that. In fact, you suppressed rights for the public to have some input. Had we had some input, you could have said something that may have changed your view of the budget. For example, I personally think that the police department is overfunded. When you look at how much you go into the police department, over five million dollars. I have a lot of tax pay. You know, we don't collect enough about proper taxes to fund the police department. Take on top of that, we spent eighteen million dollars, this fund, not city resident, but, it's probably about eighteen million dollars. But that comes to a total of twenty-three million dollars for law enforcement. And citizens like you said, I only lived in Prentiss Town all my life. I was born in Red, in Red Falls, where the dollar truth story, I don't marry you, some support, that's why I was born. Moved to Stony Street, that's where I lived it. Then I moved to Broadway Street, where I live now, off of Baston House. I only lived in northeast, like I said, I only lived in Prentiss Town. And I'm of the opinion that we're actually overfunding the police department. I agree with Mr. Green, I'm not funding the police. But it comes to a time when you got to stop blaming the citizens. We have all this conversation about, uh, oh, we need some help. We can't solve these violent crimes, these shootings, let's community help us. That, that's the truth to that, but that doesn't absorb the police responsibility for solving some of these crimes and blaming the public. But we don't get in helping, we can't solve the crime. I, I don't, I don't agree with that, and I don't think many people in our community agree with that. It comes to time that you got to accept some input from the public. For example, you have, I don't think, like I know, less than seven to six, probably seven, eight percent of police officers don't even live in the city. So that would have been an opportunity for the public, myself, and maybe we want to get the possibility to offer some incentive for police officers to live inside the city. You can't have a relationship as the police officer, anybody, work twelve hours here, leaving, when you're off your shift, go to Lavo, go to Jasper, go wherever you go, and come back in and say that you kind of have a relationship with the community. That's apparent, that can't happen. You can't work here, then leave, work here, then leave, and have a relationship. You don't go to church here, you don't buy your food here, you don't shop here, you have no relationship. So, that's my public comment, I have more, I have more to say during the public comment, unfortunately. But one other thing, though, Mary, is this. Why are you giving us the three minutes for public comments during this public hearing on the budget when in fact you denied us an opportunity to have input during the workshop? And you could have had some discussion during that workshop, but you chose not to have any discussion. And then you have one workshop, you don't like the talk, and now you got this sixty million dollar budget, and you're saying that the owners come up, the owner, I've limited the three minutes. That seems to me that it's not, uh, user-friendly as far as the public concerned. And, 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 and I don't think that was fair.
We'll, we'll look into it next year, absolutely, we'll look at, make sure it's good.
Well, I, well, you got no choice, but, but next year and now, but, but, you know, I didn't want to, I, I want to say this to your face, that I thought that was one of the weakest things you've done as, as a mayor, and to have people come up to this meeting expecting to have some input, and then say, "Well, we're not going to talk about it because we want to take it back and bring it back with no increase in the millage." Well, everybody agreed with that, but the size of the public's input, uh, was, was wrong, and, and I think it was a little mistaken in doing the thing to, uh, build confidence, uh, for this, for this, for this government. In addition now, and I'm taking more than three minutes, is that during this process, what I preserve, when you have department heads and others able to do the process, when you've got a budget and, suggesting from the internal city manager, or it was the city manager, and when a department head is able to write a memo and then CC you all as petition the city council on behalf of themselves and their, their department, that used to go around the whole city manager's form of government. The city manager make the recommendation. The city council can accept the recommendation or refuse it, but they should not be influenced, unduited by a department head. They don't need no city manager. You can just, okay, we're dealing with each one department head, what you, what your budget, and go budget by budget, department head by department, and do it like that. Otherwise, you undermine the very system of government that allows city manager's form of government, and you also deal with the city, with, with the, uh, city manager and not with individual staff in this process. And that's just my public comment.
Good.
I know the budget is done, but I do want to state this comment. I agree with you not giving rates across the board, but it's two employees that y'all probably should have considered giving employee, uh, excuse me, a rate. These two employees, number one, the first one, count all your money, all your funds, make sure y'all look in, in code, y'all in code, and y'all look past, Donna Duncan, she got a, what, cost of living rate? Y'all should look into giving her a rate. Also, uh, Paul Dowd got eighty-three employees. When I found out this man got eighty-three employees and he make under a hundred thousand dollars a year, y'all need to be shaming yourselves. That's two employees that are valuable. When your toilet flush that water, y'all need to look into, uh, looking at this budget. I know y'all saying, "La, next year," but they need more than just the cost of living rates.
Mayor Witt, um, I would echo what Mr. Bowden said. Um, you lack, and you show very weak leadership when it came to the budget. I think, if everybody would be honest, this whole council, I would admonish them. They failed the financial director, they failed, uh, to give direction to the internal city manager about the millage rate. And if y'all be honest, as some of y'all have came back and said that y'all lacked direction, if y'all would have told, y'all did not, some of y'all were not even in this room when orders were given to the financial director as to what the millage rate should have been. Y'all did not clearly tell as a council what is y'all in the future fiduciary responsibility to let them know where you want the millage rate set at. And so, when you come back and you start talking all this garbage about they did not have the budget set and that the budget was going to exceed the millage rate, it's because you all did not do y'all due diligence and give them the right marching orders to tell them exactly where y'all want the millage rate set. Then they would have presented y'all a budget according to the millage rate that the council would have gave them the marching orders on. Mayor, you failed them, and this council failed them on that, and y'all need to own that and stop shifting the blame to this administration, I mean, to the employees in the administration and own that you all made the mistake. Stop trying to du, dodge public criticism for doing so. Stop trying to dodge the newspaper for doing so. Don't blame the administration for something that you were clearly responsible for doing, and you did not do it. And to lead people out of the budget process and have an opportunity to make public comment, you are spending our money. I, it, it, it frustrates me that you all think that for somehow, the only reason you serve, you serve it to leaves of the people. We vote you in, this is our money, we're taxpayers. So, to leave us out of the process is just outright wrong, and it lacks leadership. And y'all should reconsider that. Y'all need to do better than that, and y'all need to apologize to this whole audience and make a public apology to this whole community. The way y'all ran this budget this year is the worst it's ever been ran in my entire life. And you all are the laughing stock of all the six, seven counties in Florida.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak on the budget?
Mayor, members of the council. I didn't get some of the latest draft of the budget until even noon today, so I've had very little time to look at it. I understood that the intent of the council was to give raises up to fifteen dollars an hour and to prevent anyone in the thirty to sixty thousand dollar range from getting a compression issue, where you have somebody that had five or ten employees, and they were then making same money as the people who were just elevated to fifteen dollars. This budget presentation looks to me... This budget presentation looks to me like, with exception to the fire and police departments, that across the board, every single employee got a bonus, a raise of an average of two dollars and seventy-two cents an hour, which is what it took to avoid the compression issues of the supervisors supervising someone at fifteen dollars an hour. So I guess in your wisdom, um, that may be your intent, and I'm okay with that, but there were a couple of things that I found to be in particular of concern. There were three police employees and two fire employees, I believe, that automatically got a raise within this outline of salaries. And yet there were eleven police employees below fifteen dollars an hour and twelve fired below fifteen dollars an hour. So I don't understand how, and I know there are negotiations with the FOP about sergeant level pay or who's going to get, uh, you know, their fire pension or whatever. I, I understand those, those things are going to go before the respective negotiations. But if every employee in the city was given fifteen dollars an hour and everybody, even though they were not supervised, was given two dollars and seventy-two cents an hour more, then why did we not take care of the other eight people in the police department and the other ten people in the fire department that are making less than fifteen dollars an hour? Some of them making nine dollars and change. So I would think that we should, as a rule, if you're going to give every employee a raise, then you should also extend that to the police and the fire department so that they can at least make as much as the, the person who cleans the lawn or whoever is in charge of doing AR and AP inputs or whatever. It seems like it was a little unfair in their regard. Thank you for your time.
Hey, anybody else wish to speak? Okay. Since no further comments regarding this matter, I now ask the city finance director to state further record the taxing authority to propose village rate, the rollback village rate, and any change intended to village rate represented to continue village.
City council of the city of Lake City is taxing authority proposes a tentative tax on all property located in, within the city of Lake City, Florida at the rate of four point nine zero 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 mils for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-two operating budget. The current year proposed operating mileage rate is point five one, is a five one, point five one percent decrease from the four point nine two five three rollback mileage rate as defined by Florida statutes and represents no change from the previous year's mileage rate of four point nine zero 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 mils.
Allow us to city attorney to read village resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three O.
A resolution of city council of city Lake City, Florida, adopting a mileage rate for the levy of ad valorem taxes with the city for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two and providing for an effective date period.
I call for a motion for adoption of village resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three zero.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of city council resolution twenty twenty-one dash one three zero.
Second. Been a motion and a second, and a discussion by council. Ms. Hoxby, call the roll, please.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes. I now ask city attorney to read budget resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three one by title.
A resolution of city council of city Lake City, Florida, adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two and providing for an effective date period.
I call for motion for adoption of budget resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three one.
So I move for approval of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one three one.
Second. Been a motion and a second, and a discussion by council. Ms. Hoxby, call the roll.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mayor Wood?
Yes, that'll put our budget here for today. Okay, we're, first is wishing to address council. I have. Ms. Mary Hale?
I'm going to wait when there's not so much going on. I'll come back to another meeting.
Okay. All right. Mr. Warren, you want to speak?
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, you have three ethic complaints, um, that I have filed on this, on Councilman Green. I have filed one on you, Mayor Wood, and I have filed one on you, Councilman Jefferson. Um, they have already been sent to Tallahassee. Uh, my lawyer has confirmed that ones filed against Mr. Green and Mr. Jefferson have already arrived uh, with the Florida Ethics Committee. Um, I would like to say a little bit about it, is that we cannot interfere with FDLE investigations. It doesn't matter how much service a person have rendered to Lake City. We cannot be making suggestions or any windows that certain people should interfere with those investigations. Mayor, you cannot be making promises to me on the telephone about silencing me and violating my First Amendment. And Mr. Jefferson, you cannot be speaking to Public Works Director during an investigation. So those are clear ethic violations. Also, I want to go on record that I have had a city employee come to the resident of where Vanessa and I live and told me that they got a call from Councilman Jefferson. And Councilman Jefferson told them that they had just got off the phone with Amy Fields and that he was told that there was a videotape of this particular employee selling items from Public Works to a deputy, along with other videos. This employee came to me and told me that him and Jefferson had this conversation. He came to me, asking me, can I provide cover for him? And then Jefferson told him that he needed to do something about these videos and find a way to cover. Not only did he come and tell me this, that the employee, there was another employee in the truck with him that heard the conversation between this particular employee and Jefferson, telling him and tipping him off about videos of this particular employee being caught on tape doing things with the deputy. That employee and the other employees and myself have agreed to write written FDLE statements to confirm and substantiate these complaints against, uh, Mr. Jefferson as it relates to obstruction of justice and interfering with the FDLE investigation. And so I want to go on the record that corruption do exist in Lake City, Florida. And so this attempt to try to hide it and to try to cover it up and suggest that people interfere with investigations, what we should be doing and priding ourselves in that if investigation is going on, then we should all be supportive of that investigation and say, well, the chips fall, let them fall, and be supportive of this administration in doing so. But the Florida Ethics Department take ethic complaints very seriously. You have sworn duty to uphold, y'all take ethic classes, and you know the things that's written in here with me and my attorney, that you have clearly violated your ethics, rules, and policies. Uh, both Mr. Green, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Jefferson, and, um, I guess, Mr. Jefferson, you'll be here for the FDLE. Thank you.
Mr. Valen?
Thank you, Mr. Val, I promise I won't be quite as long as I've been. There's been a couple of things said that I agree with, is, uh, the suggestion that Mr. Councilman Green made and Ms. Fields is doing the investigation. It points to some of the witness in the administration told, uh, proud of Mrs. uh, Fields coming on board. When I worked for the federal government, and, and I had the unfortunate experience of having to tell somebody not coming back to Congress from Brown's office, one of the first thing the IT department did in DC was shut those people out of the email. Not a personal email, but from being able to access email that owned by the government. And then we had staff people start accessing the email to be sure that there was some traffic that would benefit out of it. For example, you just mentioned that, uh, we don't know exactly what happened with those two hundred thousand dollars. We don't know if there's some organ money committed, but the proper thing to do was to go into Mr. Heffner's email. Not for any personal reason, just to see what's out there. I bring that up, I had the opportunity to look at a copy of an email that was sent from Department of Transportation indicating that city had received a grant for passing screen. Now, at the last meeting, nobody actually knew whether we had, that Thomas said something about it. And that email description lists, Mr. Mayor, it was to you, it was to Mr. Heffner, and it was to Mr. Henry. Now, obviously, you didn't read it, because you, you remember it, I'm sure. But the fact that Mr. Heffner is gone, that somebody had been able to get into that email traffic, they would have, they would have witnessed that because it was in the middle of office, then we would know about it. Same thing with issue going back and forth. Somebody getting Mr. Henry's email. There could be some email traffic sent to Mr. Henry and to Mr. Heffner that's a benefit to the city that we need to know about. I'm not talking about the personal business, because I was told when I was on federal government, you know, don't use that government email to talk about things that you want to reveal. But for the purpose of running the city, when someone leave, we ought to have, we being, you ought to have access to the email address and find out what kind of businesses out there that we don't know about. And so I, I agree with Mr. Green a hundred percent that Ms. Field need to do some research, particularly in Mr. Heffner's email account, he started looking at Mr. Henry's email account for purpose of seeing that there's some issues out there that we are missing because we don't have access to the email track. Mr. Mayor, your name is on a lot of email track at the mail. So it would behoove you, if you're not going to do it, to get somebody to read your city email. Because otherwise, we, we lose out. This thing, if nobody had responded, we could have lost this grant for Department of Transportation to do, uh, pass screen only because nobody knew. But there's a public record that we've been granted, we've been authorized to start procedures to do pass screen. So that's what I want to say as a relation, during my public comment section, but I have more to say when we get to our page, too.
Mr. Campbell, Fairland? Mr. Fairland?
How did it go on there? First of all, I want to say, I want to bring up one. Mister, our former fire chief, who we still up here today gave great credit to. Good man, he, he did something for me personally, good man. Why do we dishonor him by not doing something simple in this room, as putting on these masks? Why do we just, this man just died from this monster? Have we want to put on a doggone mask? The guy, damn it, he didn't hit, didn't have on a mask. Come on, y'all. Come on. Come as simple as wearing a mask. They give him away the door. Man over here told me, he gonna just keep his distance. Come on, people, ladies and gentlemen, can we, can we, can we even do that? Can we honor this man and put on a mask? All right. Um, some of this stuff going on, I was born and raised on Washington Street. Some of this stuff here, it's ridiculous. All this trying to be sneaky. Some people, I'm just ashamed of what's going on. They know what I'm on, watch. It hurts. It really hurts. This is ridiculous. Just a personal attack. This politics, you got it, deal with it. But any little personal sneak attack you're doing on people, not right. Not right. It's going to caution. We vote, remember I told y'all at Richardson Hall, we vote. And no matter what, they have to try to do to stop, we gonna vote. So y'all need to get your ears out your butts, and let's do the right thing and put on these masks when you come. Don't the sign say on the door, you stole the way a mask? Why are you allowing people not to wear masks? People are dying from this thing. It's a monster. A monster. My wife worked at the medical, so she came home so upset last Saturday because she had to leave the lab and go to the PECU, which is part of the operating room. They turned it to a COVID unit, and she saw them people on the fence. She came home in tears. Y'all, this is a monster. And we can at least put on doggone mask when we come to these public people. And that's y'all's job. Okay? The sign is on the door. It's ridiculous. And I'll talk later.
Uh, please, thanks for Cooper. Okay, you don't want to speak till then? Anybody else want to speak out of, uh, general comments? If not, then we will move along. And the old business, uh, discussion of possible action fire pension board appoint. I haven't came up with any, uh, need ones, for sure. I guess we just keep working at that, and hopefully by the next thing, somebody can have some name.
Mr. Mayor, we actually need one for the general pension board as well.
Okay. Well, we need two. Double the work. All right. Number nine is discussion of possible action on May third, twenty twenty-one. City Council ordinance number twenty twenty-one, twenty-one eighty-nine, passed and adopted related to the establishment of temporary moratorium for a hundred and eighty days related to the issues of a due business tax receipt that are related to activities that include electronic simulated gambling promotion or electronic sweepstakes, accepting renewals of existing business tax receipt. The temporary moratorium is set to expire on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, which is a little less than two months.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we had asked Chief Gilmore, uh, Chief Burnham, uh, uh, to do some research and bring back some information so that we can, uh, uh, take a look at this in closer fashion. And also, I think we asked administration to look at what the county proposed, uh, proposed, what they did in, at the county level. So, um, I, I think we need to have that so that we can make a intelligent decision.
Okay. Do you have anything to say on this? Okay, if not, we will move along. We took out ten and eleven. We're down to twelve. City Council ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twenty-two oh four, first reading. An ordinance of the city of Lake City, amending the code, uh, of the city, I say, Mr. Kevlin, would you read that by title?
An ordinance of the city of Lake City, Florida, amending the code of the city of Lake City, Florida.
Chapter 7, Article 4, Police Officers Retirement Fund. Providing for the addition of a section 70 dash 106, providing for a share account. Providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date period.
Is there a motion as to City Council Ordinance number 2021 is 2204?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the adoption of City Council Ordinance 2021 dash 2204.
Second. If a motion and a second, any discussion by council? Mr. Sachi, call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Okay, we're moving to resolution. First, the City Council Resolution 2021 day 128. Mr. Cooper, would you read that by time?
A resolution of City Council of City Lake City, Florida, authorizing the execution of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant with the United States of America Department of Justice through the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. Providing for the receipt of $38,642.00. Providing for the procurement of patrol rifles for the replacement of the current weapons of use. Providing for the return of the current weapons to the federal grantor. Providing for the receipt of a grant award of $38,642.00. Providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date period.
Is there a motion of the City Council Resolution 2021 dash 128?
Mr. Mayor, move for approval of Resolution number 2021 dash 128.
Second. Then a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sachi, you call the roll.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Next, City Council Resolution 2021 dash 133. Mr. Cooper, would you like to read that by time?
A resolution of City Council of City Lake City, Florida, ratifying the execution of the Airport Rescue Grant Agreement with the United States of America Federal Aviation Administration. Providing for the receipt of a grant award of $59,000.00 through the American Rescue Act. Providing for the reimbursement of operational expenses or debt service payments in accordance with the limitations prescribed in the act. Providing for conflicts and providing for an effective date period.
Okay, is there a motion as City Council Resolution number 2021 dash 133?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of City Council Resolution number 2021 dash 133.
Second.
Then a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sachi, you call the roll.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. And item 15, the City Council Resolution 2021 dash 135. Mr. Cooper, would you like to read that by time?
A resolution of City Council of City Lake City, Florida, rescinding an award of a project related to the purchase and installation of field fence at the Kicklighter Wastewater Treatment Facility and awarding the project to EMC Construction LLC. Providing for a contract price not to exceed $30,097.50. Providing for the execution of the contract and providing an effective date period.
Is there a motion as City Council Resolution 2021 dash 135?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for approval of City Council Resolution number 2021 dash 135.
Sir.
Then a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sachi, you call the roll.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yeah. Okay, Department of Administration, it says item 16, discussion possible action request from Florida Gateway College District Board of Trustees have a joint meeting among the Lake City Council, the Columbia County Commissioners and Representative of Florida Gateway College to discuss items impacting the college and the Florida Gateway Airport. The letter from Marlon Figueroa requesting a meeting on September the 21st, 6 o'clock. And uh room 102 at Wilson Rivers Library.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So would we be calling a special meeting to meet with them? Is that what the order of operation would be?
Uh it'd be like what we do, does the county meeting.
So a workshop?
It'd be more of a workshop.
I know in their letter, they say no action can be taken anyways. I would expect that. I know, I think the county passed that at their last meeting to meet with them. I think we should meet with them. I think it can't hurt us to meet with them.
I think Mr. McKee's here. If he wants to address this. Yeah. Okay.
They've devised everything.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Kraus, did you want to speak? Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know for me, it's probably long overdue. They've requested a meeting. I would support meeting uh and and hearing their concerns and uh doing that in a public setting.
I I agree. Uh you know, there's a lot of issues with, we have utilities, we have airport, we have a lot of things in common. And if they need a meeting, then I think we should meet with them.
I'll support a meeting too.
Okay. All right, we'll have a meeting.
Do we need to put in any kind of motion or?
Mayor, you would want a consensus here. Not only does that provide the administration the uh notice and instruction, but it also uh provide the county as well as the uh requester Gateway College that uh that notice also.
Okay.
It does not, does not have to occur tonight to call a special meeting, even if it's a joint workshop, but they asked for a special meeting. And I think that it would be prudent on this council to go ahead and take a consensus vote, whether or not people want to hold that special meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we'd hold a special meeting on um September 21st at 6:00 PM at Wilson Rivers Library, room 102, in conjunction with the county and with the college.
Second.
If a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Sachi, call the roll.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Oh. Yes.
Mayor Whit?
Yes. Okay, so we'll meet with the college. Okay, item 17, uh has somebody want to speak to it? That's a George. Do you want to speak on 17? 18, okay. I think everybody wants to speak on 18. Okay, that is a um complaint that's been filed and it has to be brought before us for consideration of regarding our interim city manager and uh we got to make some investigation for it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to ask, when was the last time we had a complaint such as this against the city manager and what was the process used then? Perhaps our attorney would recall?
Uh it was with Mr. Johnson and we had a law firm. Uh what was the name of Mr. Cooper line?
Believe it was Mr. Johnson. It was Alan Norton, who I believe is who did the investigation, crop back findings and recommendations.
You know, one of the items, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, it is within the purview of the council that they could conduct the investigation as well. So it may make more sense. I'm not sure which direction everyone wants to go. Um but it needs to be handled in whatever manner we decide and go ahead and get moving on whatever we have to do to complete the investigation. I think it's very timely with the um rules that we have to follow.
Okay.
Well, I would think, Mr. Mayor, that uh investigation of this magnitude, that it need to be held by an outside agency. I would not like to put the city in the middle of it because there would be questions. I I would think about partiality of something of of this magnitude, since it's against the city and against the city manager. I would uh be my recommendation that an outside firm, an outside agency.
I agree with that. That's what we did with Mr. uh Johnson. And that out there before did a good timely job of it. Let's see if they've got any other ideas.
Um Mayor Whit, may I speak?
Yes.
Um can I please know the extent of this uh harassment charge? Uh from what I understand, the first time it was submitted, um it was sent back as a lack of merit. My understanding is it was submitted a second time and then it involved me. Um is there any clarity that the council can give to me, any supporting documents, seeing as how this hit me very blindsided? Um I've never spoke to the actual accuser ever. Um I think I sent him one email maybe a month ago regarding some um questionnaires that a outside vendor needed from him. Other than that, I've never had a conversation with this person.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question for the city attorney. When this um complaint came to you, is it correct that the chief of police asked you and talked to you about the complaint and then went back to the officer to have the complaint amended from that conversation?
There was a conversation between myself and the police chief during the week of I believe it was August 23rd. And that's the Monday. I'm not saying it happened that Monday, but it was during that week. I was advised that the complaint was forthcoming from an officer. And it was uh naming the city manager and others. When I received a copy of it on around that Friday, I expressed to the police chief that the complaint does not name the city manager. It names two IT individuals. So it should be handled in the normal course of business under the personnel manual and go to Human Resources Department. Chief expressed to me that it was her understanding of the officer who had spoken to their direct supervisor, perhaps others in the police department. I then called the um Officer Burns and explained to him that that complaint as he sent does not name the city manager specifically and names two other individuals. So it would be forwarded on to the uh HR department. The uh Officer Burns did advise me that he intended to name the city manager. And I said, no, certain terms, well, you did not. And so um you did reference the city manager, but you referenced other people too. He advised me that an addendum or supplement would be coming, and it did arrive on Monday. And that's when I instructed the uh city clerk uh that it needed to be placed with the city council because it's against the charter office. Ms. Fields and I discussed it at some point during that week, which would have been um uh the week of August 30th. And uh here we are today. And I agree with Mr. Sampson's comments that uh city council could do an investigation on its own, subpoena individuals. Um I do have a suggestion that it be handled like the past complaints. Generally, someone experienced in employment law will be able to not only find the facts they may or may not be, but also be able to analyze them in conjunction with as it the complaint alleges, a hostile workplace environment, which is a legal concept. And someone experienced in employment law would be able to look at those uh facts and those legal concepts.
Mr. Mayor, I have a further question. So if that were the case and we went through that process, would it be your idea that when we subpoena those people that we would actually, it'd be involved in the questioning of them as well? Or would that be just the third party?
Well, I I didn't have an idea. I agreed with your
Well, I'm, that we should.
The city council, if the city council chose to handle the investigative investigation itself, then you would subpoena individuals. You would need to express who you want to have appear in front of you. And the clerk in my office would work to have those subpoenas served on individuals.
Mayor Whit, may I speak?
Sure.
Um my team, the IT team, I think I know where this derives from. Uh they have statements and comments. Um is it possible for them to come up and express uh the beginning and initiation of these uh supposed allegations?
I don't know if we want to get into full testimony tonight because of times and and preparation on everybody's part.
Mayor, every every claimant or complainant, as well as the respondent, has a minimum amount of process due to them. And so the the complainant uh this officer needs to be notified of when people will be giving information and have an opportunity to hear that if the council's going to hear. So I would suggest that if the council is going to do the investigation, then it's going to be noticed for a regular meeting or a special meeting. But that the public, as well as all those who may be involved, will be able to attend and at certain times participate. But to have them come up ad hoc would just create more and more issues relating to potential due processes.
Mr. Mayor, I think part of the issue is what's coming in item 18 with what the Three Amigos have decided. So when we get to that, we can discuss it. But I think for it to be fair, we need to move forward. We either need to table 18, move it off and go ahead through the process with this first, so that we can either prove one way or the other what this is.
Well, I think we need to go ahead and and bring item 18 in. And I know people want to speak, so I'm going to take 11 at this time. And uh
But Mayor, may I say? If you go ahead and do uh bring table 18 on, Ms. Fields will not have a fair chance.
No, I would not.
I I haven't done table 17.
Well, again, well, we know where 18 is going. So if you, if you're going, if you're going to do 18, we just might as well go get this minute.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Field.
Mr. Mayor, we already understand the agreement you all have in place and and it's been in the community and people have talked to us, employees have talked to us. So we understand what's going on. So I mean, y'all can keep it hidden however you want. I mean, I understand what you do, what you have to do to try and hinder ongoing investigations, but in my opinion, how is it that citizens know the order of this operation for how to fire Ms. Fields happen tonight? I'm very concerned and it's very interesting, Mr. Green's task with the motion to terminate Ms. Fields and Mr. Jefferson's going to second it. I'm very concerned that you're the third vote. And Mr. Mayor, that's wrong. Be on the street. That's wrong.
Mr. Mayor? I would, I would take exception to all of Mr. Sampson's.
Well, that's fine. And let's just remove item 18 then.
I I agree to move item 18. Second to that, Mr. Mayor, back to item number 17. Uh I think that the city uh should hire a legal counsel. Obviously, by Mr. Sampson's comments and what's already occurred here, it is not in the best interest of the city or the taxpayers for us to handle that investigation. I think that we need legal counsel to handle that investigation. That was my opinion. On item 17, I agree, we're hiring a company.
Well, I would want to take that item.
Mr. Mayor, item 17, while we're still talking about it. So I can go along with hiring a legal counsel to do it. I think that's a fair way to do it. However, are we going to go through the process? Are we going to go continue with a charade?
Uh, it is, it is a charade. Mr. Mayor, can we have order? And second to that, we're still on item 17. And I would ask the attorney, do we need to make a motion to hire legal counsel to handle the investigation?
The answer is that you need to make a motion in the direction that you're going to proceed. If you wish to proceed proceed with an outside um independent entity or individual, then yes, you need a motion for that also.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would ask the attorney, does that motion need to name a law firm in the motion?
That is discretion of the city council. You can uh select an individual entity such as law firm that handled the past city manager's complaint. Uh or you can help procurement to find a law firm.
So, Mr. Mayor, I um I think that we need to hire outside uh law firm to handle the investigation. I think it's a a only right to do uh for everyone involved and it takes the taxpayers to do that. And uh so uh I was not here uh for the previous one that was uh handled with Mr. Johnson, I believe you said. And uh so uh uh that's where I'm at. I think we need to hire outside counsel.
The reason I would recommend this firm that we've used is that way it would speed up the process and they'd get to it quicker and get it resolved rather than have to get to it.
It's all about speeding up. Why um we can't find other uh legal outside? Why, um, we can't find other, um, legal outside, um, legal outfits? Yeah. My thing is I want Ms. Fields to have a fair shake.
Well, I think it's important that both sides have a fair shake. And I think that's important. I said, but when you look at the way it's going, that's not been the way we do things. When we pop people on the Friday afternoon at 5:00 with stuff that wasn't talked at the agenda meeting. I don't know why we should start fair shakes now, but what we should do is be fair.
I don't remember when Mr. Heffernberger's name came up. It was an emergency meeting within a day or so with no supporting documents. I don't remember, I asked for this to be on the agenda beginning of last week when the agenda went out, which would have been a week's notice.
Mr. Mayor, back to item number 17. I would make a motion that we hire outside legal counsel to investigate the complaint. And that that outside counsel be the company that was referenced earlier for Mr. Johnson's investigation. I'll forget their name.
I have no idea. And there's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion back out?
Mr. Mayor, as part of that motion, is there a timeframe involved?
I think that would be up to the investigating firm. I wouldn't want to set a timeframe. I wouldn't then let the facts lead wherever they lead to. That's just my thoughts. Some motion still. We have a motion and a second.
Whoa, whoa, I want to make a comment. The proposition just was made. Nobody knew what the proposition was. Now, we've already been here before. No, no, I don't have public.
Mr. Mayor, can we have a word?
I have something I want to say on the proposition before the board.
Mr. Mayor, can we have? Mr. Mayor, what does the state law say about that? Mr. Mayor, does the public not have a right to comment on the proposition?
They had an opportunity.
No, they didn't have an opportunity. No proposition was made. Mr. Mayor, look at the agenda.
Okay, we're fixing to have public comments in about two minutes after we have this debate. It's actually called. That was the role of him. I had Mr. Beverly.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jefferson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Marwitt?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Beverly. Should we have had public comments?
Your Honor, the answer to the question is that the public must be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on a proposition before the city council. That opportunity to be heard need not occur at the same meeting at which the board commission takes official action on the proposition. If the opportunity occurs at a meeting that is during the decision-making process and within a reasonable proximity in the time before this meeting, you did not take final action. You procured something.
I may weigh on you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I've, I've heard the argument of the speaker on, over the years. I have not seen a court that agrees with that argument. It is a, I think it's a very good argument. However, I have not seen a court's opinion that agrees with it. And the statute speaks, as I just paraphrased.
All right, we're going to start with public comments. Vanessa George. On 18 and 17.
I don't know. Oh, you make a thing. It is baffling. This shop is nice in the draw. But you're going to address 18 when 17 is going to be a part of the decision-making process concerning 18? What, if, if this is going to be part of what's going to happen to the, to the city manager, how can you perceive 18 when 17 hasn't been done? Something, come on, y'all. Really? You going to do this in front of all these people? You going to sit here and act and pull it off? Come on, Mr. Mayor. That's exactly what I was talking about with the bull. This is ridiculous. All right, come on, man. But y'all, this is, come on. How do y'all sleep at night doing this kind of stuff? And you go to 18 when I completed 17? That could be part of the process. Use the, making decision on that. What are you doing 18? I'm going to talk to you.
They're all together and I'm asking for public comments. I got slammed just a minute ago because we, I asked for comments before. Did anybody want to comment? We started doing our part of the thing and then people want to get up in the middle of what we're doing.
Okay, well, you right. And guess what? We allowed to do that. But comment, listen, 17 is going to be a part of 18, correct? Am I, am I? I mean, I assumed it would. You talking about you would have made it.
I mean, allow investigation.
I mean, the investigation, it need to be used to determine what's going to happen to her.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, I disagree with what the speaker is saying. Item number 17, item 17 stands on its own merit. It could be investigated regardless of the outcome of item 18.
Well, I know you're going, what happened in 17?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. So I think a lot of the confusion is the fact that we waited till just before 5:00 PM on a Saturday before a holiday, so no one, you know, Friday just before the holiday. So, you know, when you added that to the agenda, you should have done it at the agenda prep meeting. You sideswiped people.
I did that too.
Ms. Fields, was there an agenda prep meeting?
There was, but I didn't receive that email with the corrections until Friday.
Okay, so you got a Friday to do. I'm just checking because that's not been the order of operation.
Heffernberger, when did you do your motion?
I met with Mr. Heffernberger weekly. And I gave him an evaluation weekly. Oh, that's a whole different option.
Y'all would stop my time? Regretting my time? You want, you want.
Don't get on.
Okay, but can y'all, can y'all explain to the people how y'all want to do this?
Okay, I'm, okay, I'm going to move to item. We took a vote on 17. If you want to have a seat for a minute, I'll let you get back up and speak, okay?
We going to see it waiting?
Yes.
We going to see. It's going on here.
I want to speak to 17. I want to speak to 17.
Mr. Mayor, Council.
Any other? State your name.
Any of them. Mr. Mayor, Council. Ah, this is just totally ridiculous. Embarrassing. Y'all, the, the government, the law that governed us, governed y'all too. Y'all have sunshine laws in, in the, the train is on the track to get rid of Ms. Field. She's doing an outstanding two or three job. I tell you what, if you go, you all, one, two, three, go on with it, you got to answer to God. You got to answer to God. Don't worry about what the law may do to you. God sees all. And if you call yourself a Christian and allow this stuff to go on, God is not blind to this farce of the city council not speaking to everyone. But God, you hear me? He is all-seeing, all-knowing, sees high and lows low. I won't speak politics tonight. I'm speaking on God because God is. I love God, but everything isn't. And y'all cannot call yourselves Christians and love God and do this kind of thing. Marwitt, Councilman Jefferson. I'm not afraid because I know I am a child of the King. Now, y'all let that marinate in your brain. Y'all keep playing with God. He ain't nothing to play with.
Okay. Item 18. The reason I brought this up and put it on the agenda is I had received numerous. Right, but nobody wants to speak before I talk, so I'm going to talk and then let y'all speak.
I would say that's not the case.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, council members, the move downstairs, Amy Fields' fault. Don't know if it's going to be the move in the city hall, Amy Fields' fault. It appears to me that there are a certain group of people in this community that's going to blame Mrs. Fields for everything. Mrs. Fields did not hire her. And I know you didn't vote for her and I didn't disagree. But that's how it go. But once she got hired, and there was other motion to support her, like being assigned $20,000, no, that, so there was never any support for at least two members of this city council from Mrs. Fields. Now, Mrs. Fields has taken this job and for all my indications, is doing a decent job. It seems to me, and you about to say, I heard you say that, you put it on the gentleman because you got so many complaints. But what it appears to me, man, it depends on who you're getting the complaints from. And that's what it sound like to me. And I'm not saying that Mrs. Fields should become the permanent city manager. I don't know if she's going to even meet the cut. But I do think there's a balance in this process that's been lost. And there's talk in the community, there's a song in the community. People having petitions. They have a certain business signing petitions, talking about Mrs. Fields' past, this, that, and the other. And then in that letter, it showed how racist this is. Is that they mentioned Mrs. Fields' ex-husband. But then they put a highlight, bold highlight, former NAACP president. Now, what in the hell did Mrs. Fields' ex-husband got to do? Tell me what the NAACP president got to do with this particular process. But what I'm suggesting to you is that we're not stupid. And that's white and black. I know what's going on. People know what's going on. There's going to attempt to undermine her, giving her an opportunity to at least do the job on an internal basis. If you all decide as a group that you don't want Mrs. Fields to be the permanent city manager, so be it. But to cut her off at the knees is wrong. It's unfair and it's divisive. I mean, if you got some reason to do it, you get you put on a gentleman's evaluation, discussion, and prospects. Where I'm assuming that you're going to outline some type of evaluation at the night before you have a discussion, discussion needs to be asked. I know you said that there was no evaluation of Mr. Heffernberger. You right. It wasn't one for two years. And that was not Mr. Heffernberger's fault. It was the city council's fault and Mr. Green's. Because he wasn't part of the whole, what? They used to have to put, for the past two months. Yeah, I'm thinking about Mr. Johnson. But my concern, Mr. Mayor, is that there's an element in this community that started with Thomas Henry. All of a sudden, Thomas Henry being suspended, oh, that's Mrs. Fields' fault. How could it be Mrs. Fields' fault? There was an FDLE investigation. Like he said, let the chips fall where they may. But it seems to me it's an attempt to cut Mrs. Fields off and ask her trying to stop this FDLE investigation. I think it's wrong. It's being perceived as being racist and not only, and chauvinist. There's never been a woman city manager. Certainly never been a black person city manager. So it's a, it's a male thing. Oh, she made $120,000. Yes, she, that, that's what she, that was the contract signed for. Mr. Thomas makes $70,000, $80,000. As far as I'm concerned, he's not qualified to make that kind of money, but he make it. So, you know, now, I'm serious. You know, I, I don't, I don't get in the habit of calling anybody a racist. And I'm not saying anybody sitting up here is a racist. But the actions could be perceived as being racist. You know, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and that's the feeling with the men of us. And I certainly feel that way. And, um, and I, and I saw where people blamed Mr. Warren for everything. Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren, Mr. Warren. But I would suggest the folk who are going to put his name in writing, just say Warren about. Because there's a connection between him and Mr. Warren. And I agree with 90%, 100% of the things he's saying when he talks about the balance in this community. And, and, and I don't know with this field. And God is not with it. She was here the first time I met her, but the night when, when she came up to get a job, she didn't come up as to be the internal city manager. He came up and talked about her HR position, HR position. And that's how she got the job. I don't suspect there was a conspiracy between Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Sampson, and Mr. Hill. Okay, we going to do this and we going to have, it just happened. But the way it seemed like now, that there's been some conversation going on, either directly or through a third party. And I, I don't know that to be a fact, but that's, that's the gospel that is free. So you do your evaluation, you have your discussion, I'm waiting to see what the action.
Mr. Mayor, it was Mr. Green. We, this community, the black community, had a lot of complaints about Joe Heffernberger lying to the black community. We came to you and we raised hell at this council meeting. You all never took it upon yourselves to evaluate Mr. Heffernberger. Mr. Green claimed he was going to evaluate Mr. Heffernberger. I pressed. Y'all didn't even have evaluation forms. I was the one who forced you all to create evaluation forms. Y'all didn't even have evaluation forms for the city manager. So therefore, y'all couldn't even evaluate Mr. Heffernberger. It was because of my pro-racism request to Ms. Sykes, to the attorney, asking to see a copy of the evaluation forms. Y'all had to go out and have them created because y'all didn't even have any in hand. So all of a sudden, you didn't evaluate no past city managers. Now, all of a sudden, here we come, we want to evaluate Ms. Fields. And the sad thing about you, Mr. Mayor, you're supposed to be an attorney. How are you going to present a case and you don't have any supporting documentation?
Okay. Going to item 18. I have received a lot of communication from the public. A lot of accusations have been made. The reason I didn't attach them is because they were hearsay. And I'm very careful about things like that. I didn't want to put them in the agenda packet. But basically, the gist of most of them was conflict with, there was never a background check done that I'm aware of with Ms. Fields. And there's conflicts with her, with the application that a lot of people have been raising and documents are flying around town. And they need to be looked into and they need to be looked into properly. And I think they, you know, that they're serious enough that I think they have to be. And they've been brought to, I think, all of our attention because as far as I know, I've copied it with everybody. And I think those need to be looked at by a separate outfit. And so that's where I'm bringing this to the council today for.
What's, where are these things that you just talked about?
Mr. Mayor, ladies, we're feeling pretty high on public comment now.
Okay, wait a minute.
Mr. Mayor, someone has to be recognized. We still have a process.
Right. Okay, we're going to start in public comments on what I just said. And this will be three minutes. It's going to be orderly and, and, and again, I'm going to remind you, if anybody in the audience acts out, I'm asking the law enforcement to make everybody behave on every side. We're going to be respectful of everybody. That's why I didn't bring in this stuff here. I mean, it's, and I'm sure everybody's aware of what I'm talking about. But a lot of it was hearsay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before we do have public comment, should we discuss this? Because I, I mean, if you've gotten the Lake City report.
We discuss it, then they don't.
I mean, if, if it's some of the fake news that's been sent to like our emails, where people don't even know what degree she has, which you could have just got through public records request, I, I'm wondering why we brought this to the meeting. If we're talking about people saying, well, she has a University of Phoenix bachelor's, but don't mention her St. Leo's master's, well, I'm kind of wondering why that's the case. If you're asking about jobs over five years old, when the application says the last five years, I, I don't know why we're at this point. Now, if you're saying Mr. Heffernberger's administration did not do a background check properly when they hired a director for human resources, I could probably agree with that because there ain't too much done right. But, but, I mean, would we want to comment from the, or about this information that everybody knows? I mean, I heard him saying, you don't know.
You just say everybody knows. That's the logic. You just can't give that out. That's, that's not.
It was about some previous employment that was not listed on her application.
And that may be the case.
You only have to go back five years, Marwitt.
You only have to go back five years, um, Mayor Whit, that's only, that's the only.
Nothing on your application or resume.
That's what?
I, I don't think this is the right venue for those kind of.
I agree, and that's why I didn't bring it up.
Well, you did, you put it on the agenda.
Mayor Whit, ma- may I speak for myself, Mayor Whit?
Mr. Whit.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've been patient as long as I can possibly be patient. Um, normally, I don't say anything unless I have to, and don't get it confused. Just because I'm a quiet person does not mean I'm ineffective. So, um, I had prepared a speech, but I'm almost embarrassed to even say, you know, my accomplishments for the last, uh, two months that I have been interim. But I'll go ahead and say anyway, for the record, and for the people that actually need to know. To Mayor Whit, the city council and concerns citizens, during my time as interim city manager, I've experienced great challenges and triumphs. I worked with what I inherited from, from previous administration. This came with a divided workforce and uncertain possibilities. When I agreed to take on this responsibility, I envisioned the improvement of the neighborhood economy that would empower residents by encouraging the growth of creation of local businesses, the promotion of redevelopment that enhances the character of our community while increasing access to daily needs, the promotion of living wage employment opportunities within our locality, and business retention and extent, expansion that includes all size companies. In order to bring this to, into fruition, I recognize the need for the development, funding, and implementation of aggressive and effective business attraction to diversify and strengthen the city's economic base. I immediately began working towards this effort by partnering with Columbia County's economic development executives. Through this relationship, we've retained interested land developers and business partners who share the same passion to drive Lake City's e- economy forward. Although my tenure is not lengthy in time, I do not feel I have been afforded adequate, adequate opportunity to succeed. Instead, I have had to consistently refocus on what matters, economic growth, the concerns of the employees and taxpayers. I have listed to you my challenges and accomplishments since being interim city manager for two months. My challenges are as follows. Staffing needs due to positive COVID cases and normal turnover, internal, I'm sorry, interdepartmental adjustments with staffing, overspending and misappropriation of resources, relocation of city hall for city staff, administering city policy, developing policies for reckless reduction in mobile devices, establishing effective internal communication and implementing the chain of command. My accomplishments are as follows. A balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-two, meeting federal mandate of, of the new minimum wage of fifteen dollars an hour, premier economic, economic development in partnership with Columbia County and Gateway Airport, project snow cap preparing right now for ground lease, our Haco, we're preparing right now for the new lease. Hopefully, we'll have the draft, uh, by October twenty-twenty-one, and other potential vendors. The development of a new C D B G grant to fund for the completion of Gwendy, the repairs for Gurley Road, and the canal north and south of Highway one hundred. The refencing for Sally Jerry Park to complement the new digital sign. I worked with, uh, F D O T to ensure the grant application requirements for Patterson Street were still in effect, and currently in the process of receiving C D B G grants for Wilson Park. That's just to add some. But honestly, I, I, I did all of this in two months. Previous administration hadn't did this in three years. I don't feel that the council, uh, would give me a fair chance, even if they knew that they did. It's very obvious that you don't want me here, uh, because I've even heard it myself. I've gotten calls from other officials, um, that have stated exactly what I am saying. What I will say is that if there are any type of discrepancies, whether they're in, internal or external, any kind of complaints, not one councilman has said to me or called me, hey, Amy, hey, what's going on? This is the, uh, reports that I'm getting, could you please give me some feedback? Not one of you has said that. Tom Green Bull expressed his comments to me, if he gets something that he feel is valid. Mr. Hill has came to me on a couple occasions regarding, um, situations over at Gwendy. The other three councilmen, including the mayor, none of you have said anything. Going back to the budget, I invited each one of you to my office, along with my director, my finance director, to get an independent opinion of what you felt the budget should look like based on what you felt was right for the city. Now, I took everything into consideration and compiled that into the very first budget. Now, when it came time for the budget to actually be presented to the public, then suddenly, there were issues. At the time that I had each one of you in my office, along with the director of, of finance, um, I didn't get as much, uh, information that I need, much guidance as I need, so whatever you gave me, guess what, that's what was put into the budget. If there are any issues outside of, um, the city, then of course, you should have come to me. If you did not want me here, if you had issues with me or whatever, I'm just a phone call away. I try my best every single week to make sure that I inform every single one of you. I don't try to waste your time, because I know that you guys have other things to do outside of the city. But I'm a very approachable person, and I do think that there's just a select few people within the city that have something to say and something negative to say to bring me down. And I've only been here two, two, uh, two months, but I can tell you this, this is the stuff right here that I've done, and you can put a fact on this, Joe Hefenberger never did, and I'm still cleaning up his mess. Now, that's what I have done.
That's my leader right there. Is she perfect? Hell no, she's not. I'm not, nobody is rude. But to her point, she has tried to do more in the last few months than Hefenberger did in three years. Now, it's not her fault, people have sense of damn feeling when she's trying to make change. Now, if this is the direction this council wants to go, then I don't have any reason to work with you.
I'd like to bring something up that Miss Fields didn't, and her big work there. I tried with Mr. Johnson, I tried with Mr. Hefenberger, I tried with Mr. Swift when he was employed, to get the utility information back through utilities from a previous utility director who took it with him when he left and cleared all the files. It was Miss Fields that finally stood up to him and got her information back to keep it from leaving with him when he left the city.
That's right.
So that's something to think about, too.
I don't know what the council's impression of, of, is, of Miss Fields is, but I can tell you what mine is, because I've actually been working with her on a regular basis for the last two months. And I can tell you this much, you know, part of the problem has been said that she does not have commensurate experience with, uh, being a city manager. Well, you know what, I'm, that's kinda refreshing in a way, because I worked with a couple of city managers, and I'm not real happy with what they did sometimes. She's the first one who has ever listened to anything we actually ever had to say. So, I just wanna tell you what my impression of her and my observations have been since I have been around Miss Fields. She's very smart and very intelligent. She's very personable and very articulate. She has charisma, and she connects well with others, and I'm gonna tell you how that is. And during the time that Miss Fields has been here, nobody, not, with Mr. Hefenberger, and I'm not speaking, trying to speak ill of him, but when he was here, he never went out to anybody out in the field and ever spoke to them for any reason. It was months before he ever went out and even told who he was, because nobody knew who he was for a year. So she was the only one who has been out in the field and trying to connect with all the employees, and she's doing a great job, as far as I'm concerned. She's honest, and she's ethical, and she comes from a good family with good, a good moral background. And I don't know what else she need here, other than the ethics and the honest moral background. She's made, she's made connections with all these employees, like I've said, and some of the things that she's done has not been popular, because some people have been, uh, something has happened to them as a result of it. But you have to be a leader, the only way to be a leader is sometimes you have to make decisions that are hard. And that's what happens, and that's what she's had to do. And so I commend her for all the things she has done. She has worked tirelessly to become good at what she's doing. At this point right now, all of her hard work is starting to pay off, and I would hate to see that you would go in there and try to replace her during this interim, when all she needs to do is prove herself, because it makes no sense otherwise. So that's my, that's my opinion, and what, so, if you're gonna have a headhunter come in and look for the new, uh, full-time city manager, then at the very least, what's the purpose of this? Why, is somebody afraid of what, that she might succeed?
I normally don't speak down, except in my official capacity. Tonight, I'm not here in my office, but she is my boss. I will back her one hundred. I tried that with the previous regime, got left out in the cold. There's stuff that has gone on in this city that she is trying to clean up, that only the previous regime, previous city manager, that's just like our C B D G grant for Wilson Park. We have found out, it's not for the Adrian, it's not for the, uh, ban shell. It's for the fountain. That's what it is, I talked to Tallahassee. It's for a freaking fountain to go out in the lake. It's secondary for the, uh, ban shell and secondary for pensing. So, if we proceed with this, we're gonna have to give back a grant that Mr. Hefenberger signed for, for the engineering for the ban shell, which is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Oh, I'm sorry, one point five million dollars. And this is what he sold y'all on, and me, because he didn't tell anybody the truth of what was going on. This is what we have found out through Miss Fields. We need to keep her in her position, we need to keep her going. If she doesn't make the cut for the final one, so be it. But while she's in that office, I will back her, and I will back anybody that gets put into that position. Thank you.
I agree a hundred percent with everything that was spoken. Three hours, three hours, three hours, is what Miss Fields spent at the gas department. She is the only city manager that has ever taken the time to learn our industry and how it work. Three hours. We just had our sixth audit in a row, no findings, that's unprecedented. She's the only city manager that come and sit down with the state of Florida, met with them, understood what they said, and acknowledged them with it. I, I agree with everybody. She has done more for us in two months than the last two city managers has done with us, I've been here thirteen years.
Mayor, uh, Mayor, I, I might need a extra minute. I've been in your shoes before, I'm not here to beat on nobody's head. I'm just here to check back to you. I don't, I got drug in today. When I got drug in a fight, when I get drug in a fight, I, I, just that simple. My concern is not Wilson Park, I have no, no, nothing to do with Wilson Park. Uh, Wilson Park, I don't have anything, I had to do with, uh, that man, but not the chief, no. I don't know whether the chief need a raise or not, I have nothing to do with that. But what do I do have something to do with is the relationship that Miss Fields have with Steve. Let me go back, I didn't know who Miss Fields was, never heard of her, never seen her before. Let me give you a little politics, you're a politician. When you get in politics, you almost, you always got political enemies. I don't care who y'all, and when you got political enemies, you in Old Testament. Well, eye for eye and two for two. That's the only way you survive in politics. Well, for twenty years, I don't have her side of the family fighting me. Her side of the family fighting me, twenty years. Well, if you had it against me three times, my second would go America, my second cousin, she ran against me two times. There was no law law between me and that side of the family. I knew nothing about Miss Fields, Miss Fields, never heard of her before, heard of her before. The only time I heard of Miss Fields, she called me. She said, Mr. Fisher Williams, uh, Ms. Amy Fields, and I want to, uh, sit down and talk to you. I said, for what? She said, I'm the city manager, and, uh, I, I need to talk about utilities in the county. And I was told that there is a bad relationship between the city and the county. I said, well, you told right. I say, uh, she said, I, I have some city council members, feel this county is wanna take the city over. I said, that's not true. I said, but the best thing that you can do is we do meet, and I'll give you forty-three years of history between city and county, and then you make your determination of where we are. So, she said, would you like for me to come over to the county office, and we sit down and talk? I said, great, and we did. Uh, wait, hold on, hold on, hang with me. After a two-hour meeting, this lady turned the call and said, I want bygone, be bygone. I wanna work with the county, because what the county offers and what the city offers, they got to work together to create industry in this county before you got to buy the utilities. I have a negative impression of all of you from the night of this meeting in here, when Paul said, I'm only interested in the city, in county residents, and don't, and over, I thought he meant by taking no mu- no utilities going to, uh, 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 industry. But since she has been here, being that man right there, that's the best, hell, girl, uh, 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 committee. What can you tell, or what's best for Lake City to let me down? I didn't wanna be in this fight, somebody drug me in, drug me in this fight. But I'm gonna tell you what, I'm gonna tell each one of you all this, she helped create an atmosphere, and I have a city manager, I'm a county manager, I don't wanna get up and challenge this guy, so that you, it never existed in this county, and I have worked on every city council, county, uh, corner that you all have since nineteen eighty. That bygone be bygone, that's right, never had a city manager do that. Never had a city manager who wanted to walk over across the street, they always want us to walk over here. Man, you got good blood in you, and I don't expect you to act like you act. Your mom and dad was a good person. You got good blood. And I say that after all, I'll never forget when Shawna Beaton Ball was the, was the brand, was the clerk, 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 and called me one day and said, come by my office, I wanna talk to you. He said, is Mr. Emma where your mom and you to work? Cooked at the Kit Kat restaurant? I said, yes. He said, is that your uncle that works at the post office service station? You know where the post office service station is, right there by county office, I said, yes. He looked at me and said, boy, you got good blood in you. I'm telling you, man, you got good blood in you, and you should let your good blood shine. I knew your mama and your daddy, your whole family. But don't jeopardize something that's going on until you can get a permanent city manager. Let that relationship keep growing like it's growing now. Never happened before, but it's something good. When you hear the president of, of, the vice president of, uh, 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 Snowcap, that's the company that want the fifty-eight acres, the airport, the developer, talk about Miss Fields and the respect he got for. I trust you. In other words, people say, I didn't trust the other one, but I trust you, I trust your word. It means something. And you hear the department head that work with this city say something. Miss Fields is no candidate of the Williams family.
No, I am not.
No, it wasn't that. So all of that is hard hockey, when they say they hired her cousin for interim public record director. She didn't hire him, she walked around and asked the department head, who would that put there? Well, and that was investigating, and that's the one that recommended Cory. Don't get stopped out about his cousin, her cousin. That might be Cory, her husband might be Cory.
Leadership and some of the other council members, but it's not even really much to say so. Um, I don't know what you got good blood in you or not, uh, but you definitely don't have good leadership skills. And at least you had displayed enough for quite some time. Uh, you've caused a serious embarrassment, uh, to, uh, citizens and to this, this whole council. Man, I'm, I'm just surprised that of all people who people have given a second and third chance to, when you've had your own share of issues, that people re-elected you, that people continue that you sit in your position and don't criticize you and haven't cut your feet from up under you. If people did a background check on you, what would come up? It definitely stuff that come up on Ms. uh, Fields is not criminal. So Mayor Witt, I'm asking you, since you put it on the agenda, take it off the agenda. You have people that have came up here and talked about how good of a job this woman has done. How can this council sit here and overlook when you, you've never had directors talk like this? You've never in the history of this town have directors write letters saying Joe reinstated her to her position. You've never had directors come up here and say they'll walk off behind a city manager. You've never had people like Jake Hill and Paul Dow, who was about to fight in the same chamber, not shake hands and talk because of this lady. This lady is mending relationships in this community. This council meeting has not been as disruptive as it has been in the past with previous cities manager, with me and other folks, since Ms. Fields been here. She is doing a great job of heal- healing the race relations in this town. Commissioner Williams talks about the relationship between the city and county and how it's doing better. There's no city manager that has ever done what she's done. And to try to rob her of the opportunity to be successful at this job, for whatever reason may be, is just God wrong. It's wrong. And that is the work of Satan. I don't even really talk religion, but that's the work of Satan. Any good decent person, you don't want a Moore compass? You don't want a person with good Moores to be at the leadership of this city? You want corruption? Do you support, you're supposed to be an attorney. How could you support corruption?
I don't.
Yeah, I know you don't because you're the one who initiated the FDLE investigation. You're the one who said Thomas should though. You, you're the one who said that an independent agency should be used.
I did not.
You did. You did it. You told me you did it. You told me you did it. You told me that you wanted a single investigation that you did not want the city police involved, nor the sheriff. And she chose FDLE.
She chose FDLE before she ever talked to me.
Mayor Witt? Of course. Mayor Witt? Mayor Witt, Mayor Witt, thank you.
But I did not call FDLE. You can check their records. You can call them.
Mayor Witt?
I did not call.
You gave a recommendation to the city manager.
I said it was a bad thing.
I'm not arguing with you about it, Mayor Witt. I know you want to argue, but I think I said what I had to say. My time is up and I'm going to sit down.
Well, I did not call FDLE. I just said it's not, just like I'm saying now, it's not.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, this is a point of, of fact, no one in this county can call the FDLE for an investigation other than the duly elected sheriff. And I believe that's who actually called him. So just to let you know, Ms. Fields didn't call him either. Mark Hunter called him on behalf and he looked at it and then he called him.
The sheriff did.
That's the law.
Okay. Anybody else? He get to speak. Now let, let him speak to you. And then you guys.
Thanks, Iran. So I would first like to speak about SB fifty for about fifteen seconds. Mr. Cohen is wrong. I did do the research. Fast case, he knows what that is. Three cases. Nobody even argues with the public's right to speak about a proposition because everybody lets people do it, except Lake City. Proposition isn't a thought. It's not a dream. It's not an idea. A proposition is when somebody makes a motion. You thought on importance. Those were a proposition before an elected body or not potential item for discussion. So when you're about to decide when you're going to have the city council investigate on outside authority. It is the final action on that instance. It is happening. And you guys usually need to be sued finally and get this straightened out because nobody violates this stuff, except for you guys. Now also mentioned tonight by Mr. Cohen was that Amy Fields, and she doesn't want to talk to me, I'll tell you right now. But that's fine. You don't have to talk to me. It's a charter officer. Well, I got the charter right here. Interim city manager. Word interim shows up three or four times in the charter. Doesn't say anything about an interim city manager. Period endo. But our contract says, and I define anybody to look at the charter and find the word interim city manager. I define anybody to look at personnel policies and find the word interim city manager. It doesn't exist. As you see, Ms. Fields just shook her head. No. It's nowhere. It's Nowhere'sville. So, you know, I don't know what you folks are up to. I don't know what Mr. Cohen is up to. He should know better than that. Because the charter clearly doesn't mention the word interim city manager. In fact, our contract says she's not bound by the personnel policies. Am I right?
That's right.
She said that's right. So I don't know what all you guys are doing. You need to follow your own rules on the process guide. I've been writing stories for forty years and never saw anything like the bullshit that goes on in this city council. This meeting goes, I'm the only one that the police come up to remove. But right into two guys, two thousand, I'm the only one. Police officer on one side and a police officer on the other side. I don't get that. I do get this. There's nothing in the charter, just to wrap it up. It says interim. So she's home free on that one unless you really want to get sued big time by a real big city attorney when she goes and gets somebody for violating her due process rights. And I'm leaving with this. Ten years ago, two thousand and ten, Ervin Darby was sitting in that chair. And the city, I would just give a little courtesy for one minute here.
Okay.
You may have been at this meeting. Ervin Darby was sitting in his chair. And he was talking about attorneys. And he says attorneys talk too much and they write too much. And he said, take for instance, he says the Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. I'd like to have Ervin Darby reexpose it. He said, Mr. Darby, Fourteenth Amendment. So why does it get everybody their civil rights, nineteen eighty-three actions, their due process? When somebody comes and doesn't randomize you by the police when they're surrounding you? You've got a problem and they got a problem if they don't do it. That's due process. And I says to Mr. Darby, by the way, I do understand that attorneys talk too much and they write too much. But this is true. You go back and listen to the way they all close. I says, exactly what words would you like to take out of the Fourteenth Amendment? And he looked at me and smiled. Of course, there aren't no words that he'd like to take out. And I'm saying you need to look at what you got in, your own documents. And those don't refer to Ms. Fields. If you don't want to talk to me, that's fine. But you guys got to study your own documents. You're an attorney that can tell you the law and not a bunch of BS. And you need to just table this stuff tonight because understand this. Whatever, whatever the police department personnel claimed against Ms. Fields, that's nothing but an allegation. Period endo. In America, you're innocent until proven guilty, even in Lake City. So I'm suggesting that number one, you revisit the city council's investigation of Ms. Fields, if that's what you want to do. And that number two, you just forget about this stuff and go about your business instead of looking with a bunch of fools. Thank you very much.
Okay. If I ask for a favor.
Mayor, council members. Mr. Sampson has been a terrible influence on the city council and greatly harmed the public trust. I'd like some more. And greatly harmed the public trust the way he convinced the city council to hire back a terminated employee as city manager after rerouting the old city manager out. The council should have caused for Mr. Helfenberger to fill the assistant city manager position before terminating the only manager that you have. So there wouldn't, there would be at least some continuity in the transition. As it is, you went into uncharted territory with your own public charter. And that was you had to reach down into the employee pool or the past employee pool to hire somebody. The person selected to fill this huge void in management had no prior experience in municipal governance and still has not been properly vetted for the responsibility of overseeing a sixty million dollar a year operation. I took it on myself to do some background checks using publicly available records through our courthouse. And I found that she had leans and judgments against her, that she had.
That's a lie.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. That's not correct and not true. Can we have order?
I'm not going to be able to advise by this time.
Order.
We have order.
And I found that she had worked within the last five years for the Department of Children and Family Services, as well as the Swanee County School District and the Bus Drive. She didn't list these on her application, but rather listed, uh, the Urban League in Miami as a place that she was employed while she maintained residence in Swanee County. So I believe that Mr. Sampson should be removed by forfeiture. Personnel issues relating to a terminated employee and a misguided process of firing Helfenberger and hiring the previously terminated employee. Mr. Hill, who was previously admonished for getting involved in employment matters, should have cautioned at that point that he was doing so. Finally, Mrs. Fields has wreaked havoc on the city by rearranging positions and meeting with other county administrators to provide guidance on how they can use the city resources. But none of you were made aware of it until tonight. So the city really can't take many more, can't really take many more defections or internal arguments. And while there may have been some very glowing reports from directors here today, most of those people were given eighteen to thirty percent increases in their budget when she submitted the first two budgets along with your finance director. And they negated to take care of the lower paid employees that were in the budget. So I feel like only after they've been caught with their own little cabal and their own little, uh, network of friends, only after they've been caught have they been held accountable for their misdeeds or in her case, her lack of experience and in, and the ability to guide the people that were crafting the budget this year. I move that you have a harsh review of Mrs. Fields because I don't believe she's half as good as these people essentially.
I do want to say one thing. Uh, Mrs. Sampson, I did not know you was a public master or a tranquility, uh, tranquilityist that make these people do what you want them to do.
I. My recommendation is we take these complaints and these allegations and we put them in with the, uh, allegation of seventeen and vet them and do what we should have done before if they, if they wasn't done before. And, and if there's nothing there, there's nothing there. They can clear it up for the public and for Ms. Fields.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Oh, let me speak. Uh, first, uh, let me, uh, address a comment that, uh, Ms. Fields made when she said that only two of the council members met with her. If she would allude to it, when she first came on, we were meeting at least once a week. And I guess due to her schedule toward the end of it, you know, it sort of broke off. And, uh, we talked about some of the projects that was mentioned in here. She told me about, uh, the, some of the issues, uh, with public work. We talked about city hall. Because those were some of the problems or questions that were brought to me. I went into her office and we talked about city hall, where we were with that. Because she came in at a time when Mr. Helfenberger was doing some things with, with city hall. We talked about, I met with her about Patterson Street. Sometime immediately after she came on board. And for the last time, uh, we talked about Patterson Street was Friday. So I disagreed to a certain extent when she said that I didn't meet with her at some point, which I did, um, I meet with her.
I was referring to the complaints.
Okay. No, I, I did not. I didn't do about, about complaint. No.
We met often. Uh, I was referring to, um, complaints that Mayor Witt, um, had seen. If there were complaints, certain, uh, councilmen did bring that to my attention, but when we met, he didn't bring me any complaints. That's not what I'm talking about.
No. I didn't bring, uh, those, uh, any complaints to you, uh, but I thought you was misunderstood what you're saying. So now that we're on, on the right page, uh, I'm not giving you that. The other issue is I have been getting multiple complaints, both from community, both from employees. Some good, some bad about Ms. Fields. But what I don't lack is then I'm not able to give them the answers that they're asking for. Because either the information aren't there or I don't know. And I feel that I should know that information to be able to adequately, uh, relay that to the constituents that is asking that information.
So what's the question?
Hey, well, I don't want to go into things individuals are asking me those questions. No, I'm not going into the specifics about what, the question that they're asking. But I will.
I continue to hear laughing. Can we have one to clear the room?
With law enforcement, get order within the room. If anybody's making comments, laughing, whatever, please ask them, please. It's been three hours of it.
Mr. Mayor, this brings to mind a question that I, I might add already, so we're getting. Will you finish up? I, okay.
But no, I, I'm not going to, uh, present unverified comments that were made to me that I can't substantiate that, uh, that. And so it would be inappropriate, I think, for me to address, allude that it is accurate what was conveyed to me. But one of the things that concerned me tonight is that when I see more than half of our directorship from the city come up before this council and make those kind of statement that they made about the leadership of their leader and what's going on in our city. And it's very difficult, you know, for me to hear more than half of the directorship to come up and make those kind of, uh, comments about the interim city manager. And then me not have some concern about their leadership and her leadership in their role. However, I do feel that there are some things, some questions that were asked me that, that need to be addressed. They need to be cleared up for the sake of the community as well as for, as the, this council. And that is, you know, I might be being asked questions about an application issue. I cannot answer that because the information is not there on the application that they're asking for. The pre-employment background that should have been done, wasn't done. That needs to be completed. And I support that. I still feel that that needs to be done. But I find it difficult to to ask this council to terminate her, knowing that what I just heard from these, uh, from, from the department heads. Uh, it gives me a different take when I hear the department heads come in before this council and make the kind of comments that I heard tonight. But as I foresaw it, I still feel that those things need to be investigated and brought before this council. Uh, uh, the pre-employment background and the discrepancies that in, in, in the, uh, applications, if there are any. I don't know whether there's any discrepancies and there are not. But I know the information that was asked of me, I don't have it and it wasn't available to me. So I have a different turn on, after hearing what these, uh, directors coming for me and say, and that, uh, primarily was a turning point in, you know, what I feel and what I have versus what I have been told and what I have observed. Because these are the people, the directors, that are out there on the front line and that are conforming. And for them to, to come up, more than, more than fifty percent of them, and says that they support their boss and that she's doing an excellent job, but it en- enable them to do a good job in the field and provide better services to our citizen, it, it's very difficult for me to, to go against that. So I now, I have a, a merit, I have a different turn on what I was thinking before.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question.
Sure.
In relation, so the council has chosen a company to move forward to bring in applicants for the city manager position.
Right.
What's the status on the search? Does anyone know? I mean, we're a month into it. We doing anything?
I backed back. Has it done anything?
You're on the, the contract. It's not provided until last week.
Right. I know it just came in last week. I knew it would be a slow process.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make.
The search firm agreed to ninety days. However, there was a mention in their quote of up to one hundred and twenty days. So in the, uh, in the agreement that was sent, um, to the provider, it references ninety days. You still have, um, quite some time based on the schedule that was proposed by the, uh, search firm.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make one more comment. I know when, um, Commissioner Williams was up here, he mentioned, um, Snowcap. And I don't think, we talk about transformative change to a city, and I know David's still here too. This is extremely transformative change. And our state senator, Senator Bradley, is completely endorsed Amy Fields on this endeavor and in fact, helping out tremendously. And you know, we're working with a different level we've worked with before. I've spoken to past city managers, been unimpressed with them. I met with Mr. Helfenberger nearly weekly, sometimes twice weekly. And I, I would like for each of you councilmen to reach out and ask Senator Bradley what her thoughts are about where we are now, where we were. And I wish she could be here today because when you see reaching out and what we're doing and how close we are on this deal, it could be transformative. I think the initial phase is looking like six hundred possible jobs with as many as twenty-two hundred.
That's just for one vendor.
And that's just from one vendor. And, and really Amy has driven that and the counties helped us with it.
That's right.
Uh, the council members, like the right, uh, Senator Bradley. He called office, uh, wanting to know, uh, where were we in the process with, with, uh, Snowcap? And that she was behind the project, what her descent, that she feels that the information she got back from something about this field was very impressive. The city might act land this hard.
I told you all I wasn't going to get involved in city politics. I don't mean to.
Maybe you are.
Apology. Here I am. And I haven't always had the best relationship with the city. We still continue forward, try and work through all those issues over all the years since I came here. What I can tell you is right now, we're at a point where if we can continue to work together, we can actually achieve some of these things we always talk about, but somehow always seem to fall apart. Project Snowcap is one of those projects that can be very transformative. We have another project going on off of Bell Road, very close, uh, which will be incredibly transformative. There are three or four projects that are very, very close. And right now, we have a good working relationship between the county and the city, as you know, hasn't always been the case. Again, I'm not trying to get into your business, but you are kind of at a critical juncture. And we're working well together and I'd hate to see that not continue.
Well, I, I still ask that those that had to be put in the, uh, investigation. Council choose the two. If they don't, they don't. They'll be out.
Well, I'd like to say so. Uh, speaking of, uh, about Ms. Field's background, again, I spoke on this, um, issue the other day. Now you want to check a background, again, there was this guy three city managers ago. Lied on his application. Uh, just did have a GED. But none of this came out about his background. The la, uh, the, the city manager after him got the city in that crap across the street. Again, none of this here come out. The previous one, God knows what he was going, had going on, but when we got rid of him, it's a problem. We're getting, hey, so we need to just look at this like it's showing up is. Uh, I think she's doing an outstanding job. I tried to reach her several times, but so much for that. Um, but overall, the reports I've been getting, when I do talk to her, they're great. Um, we had a meeting at, um, at the airport the other day. It went well with one of the, um, uh, what's the, what's the company, um, Passero? Yeah.
Uh, Passero is the engineering company, but, um, you're referring to Project Snowcap.
Yeah. Perfect meeting. Went great. So again, all you naysayers, y'all need to check, do some fact checking. That's all I have to say.
All right. Well, let's wrap it up and play the council.
What I made most of them is Phil stay in a position.
Oh, there's no action on Ms. Fields right now, is there?
I, I'm aware of this action for that investigation. It's all, I'd ask you for any action.
Mr. Mayor, I think we handled, uh, item seventeen to item seventeen. I think, uh, beyond that, uh, item eighteen is already going to be handled for me anyway in due course, the search firm. So, uh, I have no issues. Uh, I think I have no reason for the council to take action on item eighteen. Uh, which is directly opposite of what Mr. Sampson accused me of, but that's okay, Mr. Sampson. We all make mistakes and you're forgiven.
I've been known to make a few.
All right. There's no action on item eighteen. We took action on seventeen. Uh, I think that completes our agenda. We will be enjoying. We will be done.